Yep, thank you. And welcome to Monday, June 5th Halifax School Committee meeting. This is the one time of year I get to open the meeting because we have to reorganize and elect a new chair. First of all, I'd like to welcome Allison Banks as our new school committee member. And we'd also like to welcome back our dear friend Bob Johnson.
Yay, Bob!
So right now, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Shemelie again.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Oh, aye. Sorry, he's second.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Excellent.
Congratulations, welcome back.
Thanks. I can't find my reorganization chart. Can you steal it for me?
Yep.
So do you want me to take over from here?
Yes, please.
Doing a really good job. I might take it back now, I don't know. Everything's all the same color, I can't find anything. So, we need Vice Chair. I'd love to nominate Bob for Vice Chair. Yay, second. You get missing. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 We need Secretary.
I nominate Linda.
Okay.
I can sign this one, yeah.
I'll accept. Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we do need a PAC representative. I will be going to the next meeting, which is on my calendar, but I'm committed to it. I believe it's the 14th, but I'm not positive. And then after that, we're going to need somebody to sort -- yeah, it is the 14th. We're gonna need somebody to take this responsibility on. It's a pretty big responsibility, it's very important. So, I would suggest that maybe somebody do it that's not doing like Union 31 and Admin Review and everything else, which is kind of me right now. So, I'm happy-- Did Kim say anything about what she would be up for? Um, Kim mentioned that she kinda wants to stay where she is. We can wait, their next meeting potentially may not be until October. So, because I've already agreed to fill in at the next June-- Yeah, to get through the transition. We can wait, if we wanna wait for Kim to be part of that discussion, we can do that. And the only other pressing one I see at the moment is probably the Negotiations Committee.
Negotiations, um, Union 31 also, because we will need to have a meeting to approve bids--
Okay.
For some supplies that need to be sourced.
Okay. So, are you okay with passing over PAC until Kim can be part of the discussion?
I am, absolutely, because you have June.
Yes. It'll be all set until-- And do you wanna explain a little bit to Allison, like what each one-- Just a quick summary of what each one is and the time they usually get together? I know PAC changes. Yeah, so PAC is Pilgrim Area Collaborative, and I don't know if you know anything about it?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Yes.
So, you probably know about as much as I do. And it's a collaborative in Pembroke that takes children that we can't service in district that are -- have special needs, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Could I--
Yeah, that was perfect.
Remember that well?
Yeah.
Okay. They -- I don't think they meet like a crazy frequent amount, but it is a big responsibility.
Mostly monthly.
Mostly monthly. Okay, and they don't typically meet in the summer, from what I understand, because the rest of the school year, they kinda take a little days.
Okay.
And they do change, I think Sandra said, after they meet-- Oh yeah, they will change their meeting times to suit everybody's schedule. They're very flexible, really nice people. Everybody seems to, you know, sorta get along and be flexible in that area, so. But like I said, we can table that one. So, negotiations. My personal opinion is I sort of think Bob and I should stay on negotiations just because we're already there and we're in the midst of it right now. So, I think changing hands, and we're having so much fun hanging out with Joy all the time. So, is everybody okay with that? Is anyone-- Okay. Okay, you're right. So Casey was the alternate for negotiations, and she is obviously no longer with us. Well, don't say it like that. She's no longer-- She's no longer serving on the committee. She's a lot of people, okay?
But she did say she'd be back.
Yeah, she will be back on Christmas Day. So, we're gonna need an alternate in case Bob or myself can't be there, so. And is that meeting time flexible? Yes and no. I wanna say no, because Joy has to be there and Fred needs to be there. Both of them have a pretty crazy schedule. Right. We've typically been meeting at about 4:00 on any given day of the week. I mean, I can always get out of my responsibilities on Wednesdays, but I already pay somebody to cover for me on Mondays every -- so I have already paying somebody to be there every Monday for me, so I can do this. So to take another night off for me is kinda tough. But Wednesdays, I can stick out, because I'm a secretary on Wednesdays. Okay. But I can't, you know-- Yeah. That's why I try to volunteer, you know. I was gonna say, if Kim wants to give up Youth and Rec, that's something I could do on a phone call. I mean, it's not as much. So that's the only thing I'm afraid of.
We can stick with what we have and go close to the end.
Yeah, I really don't -- I'm not probably gonna miss one. Unless Bob drops dead at the Hopps race, I don't think he's gonna miss one. Don't take so--
It's entirely possible. I was warned not to do it.
So--
I think we'll be okay.
I mean, I guess in a pinch, we can--
Yeah, both ways.
All right.
Union 31 and considering--
Yeah. So, Union 31, also Casey, Kim and myself. So I'm gonna leave Kim there, because she had mentioned she'd like to stay where she is. I don't mind staying on Union 31. I don't know if anyone else wants to take that responsibility. We need three people, and Casey was one of them. Did you say Allison? Because Bob already did. Do you -- can you explain what it is? So, it's the union that makes up the superintendency, and so we basically hire--
Halifax Kingston and Clifton are the superintendency, Union 31. The union pays for some of the administrative positions. Myself, Chrissy, Marika Rabels, Fed Director, Christine Healy, the Business Manager. And Union 31 has business that we have to meet periodically and vote on positions, vote on salaries, vote on policies. We can meet jointly with Silver Lake, or it can be a separate meeting. But they have to vote the same issues, but doesn't have to be at the same night. We usually hold them right before Silver Lake meeting, which is a second Thursday, usually at 6:00. It's our traditional time, and then we just go right into Silver Lake and the union leaves. So, we always try to back it up.
Okay.
It's usually about three or four times a year at the most.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. That'd be great. So, Sick Leaf Bank, we also should vote on or choose representatives for tonight. Currently, I'm on it. It meets very rarely, every once in a while when something comes up. And it's pretty much one of those like, what fits into everybody's schedule type thing. It's not a set -- they don't have set meetings. It's not a bigger -- as big of a responsibility as something like Union 31 or PAC would be. So, but you need one tonight, or you wanna wait for when Kim's here? Um, we should fill it tonight. So, I don't mind staying. I can stay, but that's pretty much-- That's up to Bob, if he wants to stay.
Yeah.
And I could be an alternate, because I still--
I think that's a good one.
And you're cool with that? Okay. So I think the rest can probably wait for Kim.
Yeah.
What about this?
I think they're okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The rest, we can wait for Kim, and then we can have a conversation about it. Make her do some stuff. Yeah.
She does some stuff.
Make people do stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Reorganization. So, moving on with our regular meeting. We already welcomed Allison, so that's good. Would anybody in the audience like to acknowledge your schedule this evening? Just come and hang out, all right? The regular session minutes from May 1st are floating around. Does everybody have a chance to read them? I didn't, I just wanted one thing added. I feel like Ian, you did the right section here. Under Christine's section number three, about the MCAS Student Survey, I just feel like the major thing that was left out of that was that the surveys were SEL or Social Emotional Learning surveys, and part of my problem was that they were assessing students mentally. How did they word it? I forget their exact wording. Assessing students--
It was a school climate survey.
Yeah. But part of -- the little part of it that was the most disturbing to me was that they were assessing the students mentally. And that was the only thing that I felt like was out of here. I felt like everything else was accurate. I just wanted that added. Do you want to maybe-- Do you have any email? Email Lori and Cece? On us?
Yeah.
On it, with whatever phrasing that you would like in there, and then they can be amended, and we can vote on them next. Okay. Meeting, how's that sound?
Perfect, yep.
Everything else is good? Okay. Executive session minutes for April 3rd, May 1st, and May 8th are going to hold. For now, because we're--
That's what you can approve and hold.
Approve and hold?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Because I haven't actually seen them yet. This is the first time I've seen them.
Right. Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve and hold these until we are out of negotiations. Approve and hold them, so we're not gonna-- If you approve them, is that not--
No, you can approve and release or approve and hold.
So, approve and hold means that they're not going to be public yet?
They're not public yet. We have not completed negotiations.
Oh, okay, perfect, okay. How could I say? Thank you. Yes. Yes. So are we taking a vote? Why do I have to-- Somebody needs to second Bob's motion to approve and hold them. I second. So all is in favor to approve and hold the executive session minutes from April 3rd, May 1st, and May 8th, 2017? Aye. Warrants are circulating. School Committee Correspondence and Reports. So, I went to the mailbox at Town Hall, and the selectmen have reorganized. This is maybe also a peek at their new reorganization chart. We got the beautiful Halifax Town Report. I forget where this lives. In the building?
We have one here.
Yeah. You have one here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Who can live with me, and if anyone wants to see the one in the school? I'm sure there is. Whoever did the picture, very nice. I know, isn't that beautiful? Want to see it? I also -- my very organized pile here. Received a piece of paper from the town accountant that we all need to sign at some point before we leave here today. I also received this MAS-C letter that I thought I would just briefly mention, that I'm sure you guys all receive, and we could open every single piece of mail that comes from them. And--
I should upfront wait for it.
I would. But this one just talks about early registration for the conference that's in November. So every year MAS-C holds a conference, I guess. And I went one year, Linda went one year, and I don't know if you've ever been, Allison, but it's actually very informative. And it's a couple of days, and you can go and, you know, meet with other school committee members and talk about, you know, what's up and coming and this and that. So this is the -- so you probably haven't received it, because you're a new school committee member. So it actually would be very beneficial for you to attend, if you can. It does require taking a little bit of time off work, unfortunately. But this year, it looks like the keynote surrounds opioid addiction and substance abuse, which is obviously a big issue in our area. So this is sort of what some of the topics are, if you wanna take a look at them. And if you want to go and register early, in the past, I've just emailed Lisa Torcott, and she can register you or help you with the registration process. And it's like a discounted fee if you register before July 15th, so I just thought I would bring that up. Thank you. Anybody have any unfinished business? New business? Future agenda items? So typically, under our future agenda items, Allison, we just sort of like bring up any ideas of things that we wanna talk about moving forward. But you can always email Joy or myself or Moving Forward, as long as it's probably within a week before our next meeting, and we can put it on the agenda, so. Report of standing committees. Policy, has not met. Negotiations, we've met, we shall be discussing later.
An executive session.
An executive session, yes. Pilgrim Area Collaborative, we met, I went to their meeting, Casey went, which was awesome. She liked the time to go. Yeah, she's just fantastic. And it was really nice to meet everybody. I wasn't the only person there with a baby, so that was pretty sweet. We voted the first round of the FY18 budget, so our first read was voted. They presented a technology plan, which was voted. And we voted the PAC calendar for next year. I have to say, it was really a touching meeting, and they talked a lot about what PAC means to the communities and what some of the children -- what they get out of a program like that. And they showed a video that's actually on their website, if anybody's interested in looking at it, that talks about what PAC means and what it is, and, you know, how they have impacted the lives of these children, and it was pretty impressive. So, we're meeting again on the 14th to hopefully do a final vote on the budget, and I will let you guys know. Youth and Rec, Kim's not here, but she didn't email me anything to-- No major updates. PTO, did you go, Lynn, or did you Kim? Oh, she's been doing all of them. Okay. I told her I would be -- I would go if she needed me to go, but-- Okay. Well, the end of the year is coming. I know that they're probably still trying to reorganize for next year and stuff, so. Capital Budget, no. Admin Review, no. It's moving right along here. Union 31 did not meet. Okay, suppository. You're up.
Nice. Keep it moving.
Keep it going.
Why aren't you ready?
All right, let's -- we'll start with the enrollment. It's gone down a little bit, actually, to 592 students, K through 6. We have also finished our kindergarten screening, which was, again, it was excellent, doing all the screening appointments online. We have everyone's paperwork, and we have a total of 88 students at this time. There's a few others that are still kind of lingering out there. We're not sure what their plans are, but we've reached out to them a couple of times just to see what their plans are for kindergarten for next year. So we'll keep another watchful eye on that number, as it's approaching pretty much close to the number we had this year, which was at 95. Yeah, it's another high number. We have five positions posted on School Spring. Happy to say that four of the five positions are almost filled.
Almost.
We are super close. We're just at that final stage now. So we are -- sped behaviorist person is one of our very own, which is Erin Peterson, who is one of our specialized teachers, who has a background in dealing with students with behavioral concern and struggles. She has a PCBA, she has several years of experience in that field, and when she came on board, she came on as a specialized teacher, then we added this position, and so she kind of jumped on top of it. And she's clearly a perfect match for that position, so we're very excited about it. We have an almost adjustment counselor.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And we also have a kindergarten classroom teacher, a full-time position, that we have gone through the interview process, interviewed a couple of times, and had the candidates come in to do model lessons in kindergarten. So again, that person we're recommending on to Joy and Chrissy. And also with a long-term subposition for kindergarten, we also have thought that we need locked down a person with Joyce and Chrissy's report. Hopefully by the end of this week, we'll be able to move on those. The one position remaining is now filling in for Erin Peterson's job, now that she moved over to the sped behaviorists. Now, we're looking to fill her position as the specialized teacher. So we've been doing interviews, and hopefully by the next week, we'll be able to get a little bit closer to that.
Can you explain some of the movement?
I'm not sure they all are aware of some of the classroom changes.
Absolutely.
Some of the movement of teachers? Because I know that some people are confused about that.
All right, so--
We can start with a wonderful kindergarten teacher.
I know, that is. Put me on the spot, Mrs. Whitney. So, we have a grade 6 teacher, Jen Belski, who's going on maternity leave for all of next year. So, Mrs. Whitney, wonderful kindergarten teacher that's in the room right now, volunteered to take on that role for next year. Jen Belski was doing -- her main focus was teaching science to the grade 6 students, and also teaching her own social studies as well. So Mrs. Whitney has jumped on board and is taking that up.
It's a big jump. Science is her passion. It's been great.
Absolutely. And it's been wonderful, so I know that next year, we're looking at the new science curriculum that I know Lisa's been involved with, and Melissa Farrell has been great in kind of just reaching out and working with everyone. So, it'll be exciting. So that's the one move. The next one, we have Pam Kearney, who is retiring in grade 3. We had a number of shuffles, so I'll start back in kindergarten. So Beth Anton is kindergarten teacher, who's moving up to first grade, as Kristin Lavoy is moving up from first to second. And Rosemary Tenelli is moving from second to third to fill a current spot. That all makes sense. So that's why we're posting for two kindergarten positions. One full-time and one like long-term sub, as that's maternity leave.
Can I just say, I really appreciated the email that you sent out regarding Mrs. Tenelli, and asking the parents, you know, how they felt about whether or not they would be okay having her again for a second year, and all that. I was so impressed by that, and I appreciate, as a parent, of a Mrs. Tenelli student.
Who would like Mrs. Tenelli twice?
You know, and that's what I said, you know. And that's what I responded with. We are 100% okay with whatever you choose, so.
It's great. I mean, we just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, no, that was so -- that was so nice as a parent to hear that, to feel like they were part of the discussion, which was awesome, so. That's great. We don't care either, so we're cool with it.
I mean, we're trying to make it all happen, it's just--
Yes.
There's no guarantees, but it's just input is huge. So we had a huge amount of people that responded to our survey, and then when we offered parents the opportunity to get feedback about those particular moves-- So we had a lot of feedback about that as well. So, I'm glad to hear. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think that's all.
Yep.
MCAS testing is complete. A true success, I would say, in year one of computer-based testing. ELA went smoothly, I think math even went even better. And then they finished off with fifth grade science. They put, not so least the fifth grader said they liked the computer-based testing better, because they have to do the paper, pencil science test. And once again, I said at the last meeting, thanks to Melissa Farrell, who came down and helped out, working coordinator, Steve Cullough, David Murphy, everyone was a real team effort. Training the teachers and just making sure that the technology was there. And I think it just went so smoothly, so thanks to everyone that organized them. Future Laker Day took place on Friday. We're all sixth graders in the district gathered here in Halifax to work on some team building activities for their future classmates of seventh grade. We thank Mr. Ruiz, who helped organize that, which was once a amateur success. The kids were having fun. One thing is not on here, that I don't know if you knew about, Thursday morning, the district, the high school principal and assistant principal organized this. We had some Halifax seniors come and walk through our hallways. We had approximately, I think, 35 Halifax seniors come down. So we lined the hallways, they got off the bus, it was really cool. Some kids made signs, some kids hugged their old teacher. It was pretty emotional. It was really -- it was the first of hopefully many of these parades, and it was really cool to see. See a little kindergarten that was 13 years from now.
Whose idea was that?
We all got together. I think there were a few districts that did have doubt in the past. We got together and found the idea. Yeah.
She's the assistant principal of the high school. Michael Gill was the one who got it started.
So it was great.
We can shoot over the -- there's a video.
Yes.
Well, I can send it over to you guys. It was great. Actually, for one on Friday, I think.
It was really very special.
It was great.
I actually came here, so if you follow me on Twitter, you can see some of the Halifax pictures.
You're just trying to get more people to follow you.
Plug my Twitter. It was great.
Nice.
Third grade recorder concert was also on Friday. Double booked there, but running back and forth. It was a packed house in here. I've never seen so many people excited about the recorder concert. Maybe they had earplugs in, I'm not sure. But it was really great. I mean, this whole room was filled. So Mrs. Lassar and the third grade team of students, they did a wonderful job. You can't say enough about how well of a job Mrs. Lassar does with getting those students ready to go and just playing out all those songs that they do play. And then there were awards at the end. Each student gets a belt for however far they get in their recorder lessons, and it was pretty exciting. It was really nice, so. And kindergarten, just for next year, just talking about back and forth about the screening, the two days that we had, were again very positive, great turnout. And then we have our orientation coming up this Thursday, where we have a tour of the building, we have a playground visit, we have story hour, all during the morning hours. And then at nighttime, we have a parent orientation, where we invite parents in here to talk with myself, Brian, kindergarten teachers, which is an introductory meeting, just tell parents about the wonderful ways of kindergarten. It's brief, it's only from 6:00 to 7:00. That is also the night of our screen concert as well. A little busy, busy. We also had our book fair. I believe this was our third PTO book fair that we had this year. This was a buy-one-get-one that's still running right now. It's been proving to be very successful.
Do you want to be two, three?
For the last two years, we have. The other two coincide with parent-teacher conferences, and they've seemed to generate a lot of money for the PTO and for the library.
You know, adding the third one, did it increase? I mean, are people spreading it out and buying the same, or are people buying more, do you know?
Specifically, I don't have the numbers, but this one, I feel like the PTO helps out, because what they do is they donate books to those students and families that maybe couldn't afford. So they really do kind of help out in that sense, from their doing this buy-one-get-one thing. But it's a different -- this one is a different set of books that they send us. I guess when you reach a certain threshold every so often, then we get a different set series of books or a different card, so it kind of changes throughout the year. This one's a little bit smaller compared to the other two that we do earlier. But everyone's excited to buy a lot of books and things that are on there, so.
I forgot, we forgot another one. Last Wednesday, we had Title I and Reading, Coordinated Family Math and Literacy Night, where parents and students came in. I think there was a multicultural theme, and the book fair was open as well, so parents could go in with their kids after, do some activities. It was successful, I believe there was 70 students attended, along with parents, so pizza was served, so it was a good event, a good community event, so. Hell of a success. Sorry.
Busy.
Just a few upcoming dates. I'm sure that those aren't all the dates, but those are just some of the major ones. In terms of the eighth, it's kindergarten orientation, the course concert. We do one in school at one-thirty and then we do one and a half, one in the evening at six o'clock. Field day on the ninth, very good weather. PE awards on the thirteenth. On the fourteenth, we have a kindergarten concert during the school day. It's at one-fifteen. Friday the sixteenth, we have Step Up Day. That's where students hear. It's only twenty or thirty minutes. This, we decided to not have the students go directly to the teacher that they know that they plan on having next year just because the grade level goes up to the next grade. So, we're not, it's not the teacher that they're going to get for that particular day. On the nineteenth is the grade six final assembly. And on twenty is the last.
What time is your final assembly? We don't have a time.
I would say it's probably the same as everyone else's.
We have Dennet at five-thirty and Kingston at six, so I'm a little panicked how, because we have other places. How many of them?
I believe it's at six.
I think it's at six, too. That's really unfortunate. Is it, has it gone out? Is it possible for it to be in the sixth?
You're the boss. You can tell me.
Six forty-five.
How are you possibly going to get from Kingston to here?
Oh, I have Kingston at five-thirty, Dennet at six. It was six?
I think it's been six, six.
It's like we want to divide and conquer.
Yeah.
Come from different angles.
This last day of school, a full day?
The twentieth, yeah.
No.
The twentieth is half-day, all five disciplines.
Lunch or no lunch?
No lunch. Do we want to just hang it up?
I, I don't know what you've done. Have you communicated to families already? No. Good work now. Who's got the points?
The owner.
Who gets, who gets the alibis? It's, it's hard to be three places simultaneously, so. Okay. Great.
Are you watching, Miss Rogers?
I'm all with it.
And Mr. DeSantis?
Yes.
Um, I don't see Christine here. Is somebody pretending to be Christine?
I'm pretending to be Christine. Yes.
The other Christine.
Yes, the other Christine. Yep.
I'm Chrissy.
So, we have your financial report this evening. Christine was unable to be here. And there really haven't been a lot of changes in the financial. The one thing I did want to mention is you're going to notice under special education, there's a deficit under transportation of fifty-five thousand. And you'll see under contracted services, there's a positive of fifty-four. We'll just move that money into the line, so it will basically be about a wash there. Where you'll see the concern is that specialized tuition of one hundred and eighteen thousand. Remember, you may remember a town meeting, we are going to be using vocational money that was not used. We're going to be, the town has agreed to let us move it into there. So, between that and using some money that will come from the circuit breaker, we'll be fine. So, I didn't want those numbers to scare you. Because this time of year when you see deficits that large, it's a little bit frightening for me, especially for me. You worry. So, we're, we're fine. If you look at the, at the numbers, you can see that we're basically in, in good shape at this point. And we don't have any other areas that we're concerned about. So, we will get to the finish line and we'll be able to start next year in good shape without any concerns.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Yep. Chrissy.
Okay, thank you so much, Adam Chair. I just want to highlight one thing. When Brian was talking about MCAS, the implementation of MCAS and highlighting the team effort, I do also want to commend Mr. Vodru and Mr. DeSantis for all the effort that they put in in learning the system. It was a new system and they did spend a lot of time making sure that the teachers were supported. All of the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. So, I definitely want to make sure that they get the recognition as well for the smooth transition into our, into our computer-based data assessment. Also, I just, this isn't on the agenda, but I just wanted to let you know, I just came from our Title I conference up in Marlborough. And Melissa Farrell, our curriculum coordinator, presented on behalf of Silver Lake. It was a packed session of about forty-five to fifty people, just highlighting the, all the wonderful things that are happening with our Title I funding, providing reading intervention for our students at the elementary level. And it was very, you know, people were coming up, asking questions and things like that. So, it was just a nice representation for the hard work that's happening here. So, I just wanted to let you know about that. So, this is the time of year where I get to share the year-end review, all the great things that have happened within the district. As you can see, I stopped at five pages. We definitely could go on and, and share more. I'm just going to go over some highlights. I won't go through it all. I'll go over what's really applicable for Halifax in particular. So, within our administration, it was our objective this year to really continue to build capacity within the administrative team. We had separate professional learning communities, one with our, the superintendent, myself and the building principals, as well as myself and our curriculum coordinators, using a book called Grit by Angela Duckworth. And we use it as a launching place for discussion and we met monthly. It was a wonderful experience. We also completed or are almost completing our, another professional learning community between myself and the assistant principals, using Lost at School by Ross Green. And it's a book about social emotional learning. And we, we met monthly as well and really had wonderful discussion about some, some issues that we're seeing within the, within our practice and how to best utilize our time together and how we can support each other. Under curriculum assessments and reading intervention, we adopted the new K through five curriculum resources and professional development to support implementation. We have a completion of our six through eight science curriculum pilot and professional development to support implementation. We organized, well, Melissa actually organized and labeled the K through six science supplies, which was a real huge undertaking. She recognized how many materials were within the building and we were able to save a lot of money by not having to reorder things. They were packed away in classrooms and she created a safe, an environment where teachers can come and obtain materials that they might need. We also, we also, in our K through five math and reading benchmarking, we were benchmarking in grades two through five, three times a year in math and reading. We use data to inform instruction and guide intervention and Title I supports. We completed a tri-annual online DIBL assessment in grades kindergarten and first grade. We also had a lot of positive feedback from teachers regarding the use of the STAR assessments to help guide instruction. Our reading interventions, we had a six-day professional development and training in the integration of the Level Literacy Intervention, which is being used K through six. We have the adoption of the Level Literacy Intervention curriculum materials across all elementary schools. That's for reading and writing instruction. Staff observations and feedback regarding implementation and the use of reading interventions was also a common practice. Our writing curriculum work, we had five days of professional development, trading, modeling and classroom observations and lesson studies, especially here in Halifax, using the, the TLA, which is the. Teaching and Learning Lines. Thank you. They came into Halifax and did some professional development with the kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers and invited on the last day some of the other districts to come and join in, and it was very successful. We're going to skip over the seven through twelve work, but feel free to read it and ask any questions that you'd like. So, moving on to page three, our coordinated program review. We received feedback this year for our ELL civil rights and special education programs. And all four districts are operating within compliance for ELL civil rights and special education as demonstrated through submitted progress reports to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Site visits from DESI provided further evidence for compliance, so we're very proud of that. It's over and done with. Technology, we are in year three of our Chromebook initiative at the high school, the one-to-one initiative. And I mentioned that just because it's really going to affect our children in Halifax when they move up, that the hard work with all the technology integration here at Halifax will continue. And our elementary schools continue to receive more Chromebook cards. So, here at Halifax, we have ten Chromebook cards. Is that accurate now?
Yes.
Yes. Eleven. Right. So, the, the amount of Chromebook cards is, is, the Chromebooks within the schools really increasing dramatically. We also had monthly goals for utilization of technology to support the completion of assessments for immediate feedback. As far as professional development, we have two graduate courses within the district this year. One was Skillful Teacher through Research for Better Teaching and Responsive Classroom is being brought to the district over the summer. We continue to work, we continued with workshop opportunities for teachers in the area of SEI, which is Sheltered English Immersion. That is something that all teachers need to have fifteen professional PDPs when they apply for relicensure in the area of Sheltered English Immersion, which is English language learners. In fact, we will be, I'll, I'll get into that later. Our district PD days, which focused on meeting diverse needs, were successfully attended and the feedback was very positive as well. Our administrative leadership team participated in Planning for Success to create district action plans. And the superintendent will be getting more into that in, during her presentation. I apologize, I have no voice. Our state assessment system, we had a very smooth transition, as, as Brian reported, to the MCAS two-point-o. We created MCAS Action Plan with six goals under the topics of instructional strategies, professional development and technology strategies. And as I said before, implementation was extremely successful. Under wellness, our school nurses continue to create and distribute their wellness letter. And one thing that is not listed here, and I do apologize and I will update this, is that not only KIS, but it's been since the beginning of the year, it was new this year, Halifax also implemented breakfast programs with great success. So, we're very, very happy, especially here in Halifax, that it's just something that was brought this year. Under the new teacher induction program, one new administrator and twenty new teachers went through the induction program this year. Monthly meetings were all together with mentors and new teachers. Our ELL regulations, the, we have two teachers within the region that created and, and offered twice a workshop for teachers to obtain fifteen PDPs in the area of ELL for relicensure. So, when a teacher goes to, to relicense, they have to present evidence of having fifteen PDPs in the area of special education as well as ELL or SEI. So, that's where we try and create and, and offer things so that we can help our, our teachers so that they don't have any issues getting their relicence. And so, another ELL workshop will be offered over the summer incorporating technology into the ELL instruction. Building and safety, our goal this year was to implement the ALICE protocols. Administrators participated in ALICE training with the idea of training their own staff in their buildings. And all staff within all schools participated in the ALICE training with support from the police departments in each town. Security systems were also installed in buildings to ensure students' student safety. And what also is not listed here is that the MSBA grant was obtained and planning obviously began here at Halifax. Under policies, we always continue to update policies and post the current policies online. And then when we get to academic and civic accomplishments, specifically within Halifax, to highlight, Halifax hosted winter and is hosting spring concerts with great success. The Halifax students participated in the Nancy Chapman Memorial Basketball Game and the money that was raised goes towards a scholarship for a graduating senior at, at Silver Lake High School. Halifax hosted Future Laker Day again for all the sixth graders within the region. So, as you can see, we have been very, very busy. There's a lot of wonderful things that have been going on. And I have really, it's been an honor to be, have been a part of it. Is there any questions?
Thanks, Chrissy.
Okay.
I have one. What is a DIBL assessment?
A DIBL assessment is an early literacy assessment to determine where children are in the development of their early literacy skills. So, kindergarten and first grade, we use that.
All right. Hi. Excellent. So, periodically, according to policy, we're supposed to review all of our executive session minutes that we've approved and held, ones that have not been publicly released. So, we went back through all of the held executive session minutes since I've been superintendent and we only had two of them that we have not released. We just approved three this evening, which we would still need to hold. But these two, I believe if you want to take a quick minute, if you haven't had a chance to yet, review them. I believe these could be released. Both of these issues have been resolved and have been dealt with. So, I don't have a problem with either of these being released and we would just need for you to vote to review approve and release.
I think we need folks a moment to, okay, go ahead. Go.
And I apologize. Just so you know, the reason we never send out executive session minutes is until they are publicly released, any email is public. So, if we send it out by email, it, they can no longer be held. So, that's why we have to hand them out.
But does Allison say?
You're allowed to vote them, to read and vote them. She's allowed to do that, but you have enough here with three. But she, she can do that.
Yeah, either way.
Addition. I mean, two thousand and fifteen was a long time ago.
That's it.
No, this one's fifteen.
December fifteenth.
This is the right.
Yep. Fifteen sixteen is four years. So, you want a motion to approve and release? Thank you. Approve and release.
The executive session.
The executive session from, we'll do Monday, December seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and Monday, February first, two thousand and sixteen, executive session minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Always a favor. I oppose the sentence.
Has this completely up to date, which is wonderful. Planning for Success. So, Chrissy had just mentioned in her year-end review, which is kind of fun to be sitting on the other side and not having to organize that, by the way. It's an undertaking to put that all together, so thank you, Chrissy. That's great. We this year participated in a program called Planning for Success. Some of you, and I'm actually, now that I'm saying that, I don't think any of you were here. We did a strategic plan back in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, I think, if memory is serving me correctly, where we developed a plan in terms of how we, the vision we had for the district. And we have worked on that plan and really it became time for us to think about what we wanted to do going forward today. One of the things that I often feel as superintendent is there's so many areas that we could strengthen, so many visions, so many thoughts and dreams and hopes that I have. But if we try to do too many things, everything becomes watered down and we aren't good at anything, which is pretty much what I feel most days. So, just try to avoid too many places, like three graduations at the same minute is just a bit much. But one of the things that I think everyone can agree on is one of our goals is to try to meet the needs of all learners in our district, the diverse needs of all learners. And when we say meeting the diverse needs of all students, we're not talking necessarily about just special education. We're not talking about differentiating instruction. Students who are from single-parent families, students who maybe are anxious, students who are coming to school that maybe feel they're different because they are living with their grandparents. So, any diverse learner, child, it takes a little bit longer to begin reading. So, one of our goals is always to do the best we can for all students. So, when we decided to work with Lori Lickas, we approached it differently than, than Pilgrim Mary Collaborative did when they were doing their plan. They used the same, the same group. Lori Lickas, who's wonderful. She works for the Department of Education. And they came in and they worked with us seven times?
About seven.
About seven times. We had about seven meetings. And they were pretty impressive meetings because there were twenty, about twenty-five of us between all of our principals, Chrissy, myself, Marie Gravel, assistant principals, curriculum coordinators, department heads. It was a pretty substantial group. So, when we got together, we tried to think about how would we best meet the needs of all of our diverse learners. And this was the action plan that we came up with. And what we did was we, Lori put together a document for us and Chrissy worked to get this down, so it's a one-page, because I truly believe it's so much easier.
and Chrissy worked to get this down, so it's a one-page, because I truly believe it's so much easier to process when you make it palatable. So, this is sort of our public document that we wanted to just go over a little bit with you tonight. However, I wanted you to know that under each of these four categories, we have a document in our district where we're really going to build out each of these bullet points, where each one is going to be a lot more work in terms of who's responsible, how we're going to implement it, and the actual who and what of how we're going to make this work. Okay? So, in terms of meeting the diverse needs of all students, one of the first things we decided we needed to do was to increase the collaboration in all areas, especially teacher to teacher, teacher to administration, and vertically, K-12 across the district. We want to make sure to enhance and measure teacher efficacy through professional development opportunities that focus on meeting the diverse needs of all learners. We want to make sure to continue to build administrative capacity to support inclusive practices that meet the diverse needs of all learners. And we want to make sure to engage our stakeholders in the development, implementation, and continued support of creating a shared district vision to meet the diverse needs of all learners. In order for us to try to meet those four key areas, the strategic initiatives, you can see under collaboration, the things that we're going to focus on. We're going to develop a district-wide collaboration subcommittee. Within each building, we're going to develop instructional leadership teams. Each instructional leadership team will conduct needs assessment in each school to identify both the positive and negative aspects of our current practices. The instructional leadership team will examine models and best practices for common planning time and scheduling. Also, we want to increase the collaboration between special education and academic departments. So, we have pretty concrete goals within the area of collaboration, which is our first area of our action plan. Under professional development, we want to design and implement a walkthrough initiative in all the schools by trying to establish a protocol for modeling best practices among colleagues. When we have our mentor program, our new teachers often go in and watch their mentor teach as a way of like seeing different ways of teaching, because everybody does it slightly differently. So, it's something that we really feel could be very helpful. Many of these initiatives will take time to build out and develop, but that's just an example of how we currently are doing it with some of our new teachers.
So, you already do that now, it's just going to organize it and make it?
We're going to try to build it out. One of the things that we do is the principals go in and look at the teachers and part of the evaluation process. What we're interested in is a way of sharing best practices. You know, I've got, Lisa, may I pick on you?
Maybe.
I'm going to take that as a yes, okay? So, Lisa is very passionate about science. So, that's part of why the sixth grade science position applies to her. So, if Lisa was doing something wonderful in science in kindergarten this year, she might say, hey Donna, hey Jen, hey Beth, would you like to come see this awesome science experiment that I'm doing? She might be able to model a different type of lesson, how to make ice cream out of whatever it was we made ice cream out of that day. I remember that, I remember the ice cream. I don't remember how we got it, but I remember the ice cream. I'm really good on the ice cream. So, you know, it's that kind of idea of there's best practices. So, trying to have teachers trust and support each other and to model best practices. So, that's part of what that would be. We are, actually, we're in the process right now of establishing a district-wide professional development team to develop a professional development plan.
Tomorrow's the first.
Tomorrow's the first meeting? Some of these things we have done differently over the years. You know, back when I was Chrissy, we had a professional development group, a subcommittee, who would help us pick which graduate courses and stuff we would bring in. Unfortunately, sometimes we just have so many meetings, things fall by the wayside, so we're trying to get some of these things back up and going again. Provide consistent and sustained PD around social, emotional learning. Provide consistent and sustained professional development around differentiated learning. And provide consistent and sustained PD around increasing teachers' content, curricular, and pedagogical knowledge well beyond the grade levels. It's important for teachers to know where kids are going to make sure that they've taught them everything they need to know for that foundation for the next year. I don't know if you really want me to go through and read all of this. I certainly can, but I think you're sort of getting the idea. We have things that we're going to work on under administrative capacity and then under stakeholder capacity. What we're looking at now is if you go down below, some of the outcomes and opportunities. So, for students, our goal is by implementing these four areas is to meet the needs of and engage all learners providing consistent instruction through grade level and school. You know, my hope is that by us continuing to do this, there won't be a question that if you get such a teacher in second grade, they get this far, but if you get this teacher in second grade, they only get this far. That, you know, we have very consistent expectation rules across all grade levels and all schools. That's something that we have always worked really hard when we buy curriculum to make sure all three elementary schools have the same curriculum so that when they get to the middle school, all of our students have been exposed to the same things. We have been very successful. All three towns have been wonderful about that, by the way. Even when it's been a struggle, we have been able to maintain it. All the implementations have been simultaneous, which has been great for our kids, which is why we're all here. Provide equal opportunities and access to all students. Strengthen the engagement in learning and allow students to be more active participants and to create a safe environment that encourages risk-taking and increases students' sense of belonging. For educators, for our teachers, we're hoping that this will increase student achievement and meet the needs of all students. To create and embrace the belief that everyone has the ability to be successful and challenge all students. To create common language and practice and implement common practices. To strengthen effective instruction and focus on pedagogy. Streamline use of common assessments and use of data to drive instruction. And to collaborate and focus on a teacher leadership culture. To create a safe learning environment and to self-reflect, identify areas to improve, and to share best practices. So, we'll have that done by the first week in September.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. This is silly, I'm like, what are we thinking? Anyway, these are our goals. This is what we're hoping to implement. This is a document that will be, I'll be presenting throughout the districts this month and then we'll be putting it up on our website and we'll be continuing to build this out and talk about it throughout next year. But again, you always need a vision, we need a goal, and our goal is to always do our best to meet the diverse needs of all learners. So, this is going to sort of be our roadmap.
So, when, you know, you conquer one of these major mountains here, will you please let us know?
I will.
Share this fabulous.
Do I have chocolate flowers, anything?
Yeah, sure. Make you a chocolate cake.
There you go.
Thank you.
Perfect. Anyway, it was a great, this was a great process. You know, it's a very different type of program in terms of planning the future to go through this process. It was very different than the way we built the strategic plan and it was very enjoyable. So, it was definitely a learning process for us all. Okay. Lunch cost discussion and vote. So, we had a bit of a discussion with our cafeteria staff and Kane and we looked at a variety of things within the cafeteria. The cafeteria only holds about a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty-five, I can't remember which, something in that nick. One fifty-five. So, one of the things we thought about was could we combine two grades for lunch? One fifty-five would not hold two grades, could hold a grade and a half. So, that didn't really help us much in terms of trying to change our scheduling. But we did meet with Janet and the cafeteria workers and they were required to increase the cost by a minimum of three cents, from two seventy-five to two seventy-eight. We had a meeting before this meeting and what we had agreed to tentatively or would like to recommend is to go from two seventy-five to two eighty. Janet initially had recommended going from two seventy-five to three dollars. We were really concerned about the impact on families. A quarter a day is an extra dollar quarter a week if you buy lunch every day and that seemed like a really hard hit. So, what we'd like to do is to just do a nickel this year. We are required to have an increase, obviously you don't want it to be three cents, to go up the nickel this year. We're going to continue to work next year on looking at it and to see if there's any other ways we can keep some of our costs down. So, if you are okay with that, we would like to vote that this evening and then Kane would need to make sure that that goes in the handbook and that we get a no doubt to parents before school starts.
And what does the cost have to do with how many seats there are? Does that affect the cost?
We were looking at, are there ways of saving funding so we didn't have to raise the money?
In other words, the?
Lower the number of lunches we had, so the, there wouldn't need to be, the workers wouldn't need to be there as long.
As long, okay.
Right, gotcha.
There isn't room for two or three more tables in there.
It's a capacity by the fire chief.
Yeah, so it's not going to work that way.
Yeah, no. No, it's.
Wants to eat outside.
Put some tables.
Big dick, big dick in the snow. So, if anyone's mind making that motion, that would be wonderful.
Motion will accept a five cent increase.
I second.
All those in favor of the motion of now making the lunch cost two eighty? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
I can't complain, I'm going to be the one paid for it.
All right, there we go. And the last thing I have is just an update on the MSBA grant. So, we had a meeting on May twenty-fourth and we had the architect and John and the selectman and Casey Kane to represent the community and the school committee. And we are moving full speed ahead, Kane and Matt. I couldn't remember whether you were there or not, I'm sorry, I'm like, I didn't think you were. Kane and Matt were there. It was a great opportunity. Matt and Kane had done a really nice job of reading through the hundred and fifty-page contract. I tried.
It was.
It was, it was. I tried, I remember waking up and midway through. It was laughing. So, we came up with some series of questions between all three of us and we got answers and addressed our concerns in terms of scheduling, in terms of responsibility, liability, things like that. The town is continuing to be wonderfully supportive. We even got so down and dirty as to where the dumpsters were going to be located in the parking lot to make sure that, you know, it was safe. So, I felt like we did pretty well at the meeting. All of our questions and concerns were answered. Right now, let's see, we went, they went out to bid and the ads appeared in, I don't remember what CR stands for, but it's where the bid documents get put out. They did a walkthrough of May thirtieth on June seventh FSV.
Filed subbid.
Say again?
Filed sub bids.
That's it. Thank you, Alex. Final sub bids, June fourteenth of the generals and they are going to be awarded on June twenty-first. So. We are moving full speed ahead. We are still extremely hopeful this all works and that everything gets done on time and we're feeling pretty good about it. And hopefully, the weather will cooperate this summer and it won't pour every day.
When do they start? We're getting the roof off, when do they start?
Probably the twenty-first.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, pretty much, yeah. That's the hope is they get in here like right after school ends. Because the goal is that it will be substantially completed by August eighteenth, is what they're saying. Okay?
You've got the crew from the honey pit.
So, that's where we're at at this point, so substantially completed by August eighteen. We're going to leave.
That's just the roof.
Yes, just the roof. The roof only this summer. Next year, they'll be doing the windows and the siding, the fascia boards, the? Doors.
No, I don't believe any roof access is required for the fire suppression system.
No.
It's all from underneath. Good.
Yeah. 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 Right. And what we're going to do, just so everyone knows, is we're going to do the gym last because what we really. If, right, that will be the last piece of the summer, the last activity, because we could still open school if the gym is not completed. Because it would still be good weather, we could hold gym outside if we had to. Not our goal, but as a contingency, we're going to save the roof for the gym last, which is a large.
Could you hold it in here as well?
Excuse me?
Couldn't you hold it in here as well, if necessary?
Sure. Sure. So, I think we, I think we got through all the questions. Again, I want to thank Kane and Matt, they were wonderful. And, you know, again, we sort of went through, all of us, between all of us, we came through a lot of questions and I think we had them all unanswered. So, we believe we're full speed ahead.
Fantastic.
Oh. Yes.
Quick question, is this building a roof hatch?
Roof hatch.
A hatch. How do you get on the roof right now?
In the closet.
In the blue wing.
Blue wing closet. I climbed it.
The only reason I ask is, I have another project where there's now a brand new roof has to get cut into because it's a new code where if it's taller than so many feet, you have to have a roof hatch, not a ladder roof.
Is there a ladder to a hatch?
No, there's a ladder to a hatch in the closet.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's like going up a boot, a boat ladder, straight up.
I could see you going up a ladder outside.
No, no, it's just in the, it's in the closet. Yeah, they were quite surprised when I popped up. I don't think they expected me to do it. Yeah. That's all I had, thank you.
Awesome.
One other thing, I just talked to Alex, he had brought up that he went online last time and couldn't get to the minutes.
He, we figured it out.
Did you figure it out?
Yeah.
It was the, I was only doing it on my phone and the mobile site that automatically points you to, Chrissy was nice enough to show me, if you actually go and navigate it differently, you can get to it.
Okay.
Was it the old web site?
Yeah. Oh, exactly. Yeah. Good. Wondering about the internet, it's wonderful how things never go away.
Yeah?
In some ways, yeah. I'm being sarcastic, yeah.
Much to the despair of some.
Yes. For postings on Facebook. So, you know what? Thank you, Chrissy. We waited to vote on this until we had new members for the time. That's right. I apologize, thank you, Chrissy.
No, that's fine. This, Allison, is our tentative schedule for upcoming school committee meetings. Just so you know. On, our July meeting is on Thursday, because of the Fourth of July. The August meeting typically gets canceled because we don't usually need it. In fact, if anybody would like to make a motion to not hold the August meeting.
Do we normally do it this early?
We usually wait till July, but I don't mind knowing if I need to wait.
So moved.
Second, anybody have a second?
No second.
Okay, so all those in favor of canceling the Monday, August seventh, two thousand seventeen meeting?
Unless something pops up.
Unless, unless it's necessary.
We'll do a tentative cancel.
Okay, tentative. Okay.
I just grasped it up.
Aye. Yeah, so.
Aye, aye.
Other than that, you can see like Tuesday, September fifth, because of Labor Day. So, usually if it's a holiday or whatever, we hold it on a funky day. But we will definitely have our July meeting because we need to close out the fiscal year, so. Other than that, this.
I think it was just a timeless of the discussion, but I can't remember if you wanted to keep it at seven or not.
I'm fine with seven. Everybody else?
Okay with seven?
Okay. Awesome. Then let's do it.
Okay. And then all the other ones are at seven o'clock?
Yes, all of them are at seven, yes.
Right, whichever, whichever people.
Look at seven o'clock now. We should get started.
Break the old record.
It's not even, yeah.
So, do we need to actually vote this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Motion will accept.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, as the tentative school committee meeting schedule is printed, aye?
Aye.
So, there's that. Just a couple of things before we adjourn for executive session, only to reopen, to adjourn completely. We have the last day of school on June twentieth, it's a twelve o'clock dismissal, no lunch. And Thursday, June, July sixth will be our next school committee meeting at seven o'clock. So, if nothing else, needs to be conducted in regular business class.
And we usually, you know, we usually meet in the library.
Yes.
So, we come in here. Okay, what does it?
If you don't show up, you're going to be suspended.
Okay. Okay. So, we need a roll call motion to adjourn regular session, to open executive session. Somebody needs to read that. To only reopen regular session to adjourn for the meeting.
Very well. This thing right here.
That's it.
I move to adjourn to executive session to conduct business regarding contract negotiation strategy and to return to.
With regard to?
Okay.
With regard to the Teacher Association Board of Bargaining Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. You didn't know anything what that meant, did you?
I was very impressed.
Section A three.
I second.
Bob Johnson?
Aye.
Want to do it to us?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.